Good evening, I call to order the Ballina City Council meeting for Monday, November 21st. Would you please rise and join us with a pledge?
Do the roll call of council. Okay, we're down there. Councilmember Wozniak?
Here.
Thank you. We have a lot of people who wish to speak this evening, so that exceeds 30 minutes. So I entertain the motion to suspend the rolls to permit all those who wish to speak this evening to be able to do something.
Move.
Yes, I'm sorry, they're on the list.
Okay, we get to speak. Has Snowmull?
Uh, move Mr. Snowmull. Second somewhere.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Mark Warsaw.
I live at number four, Mary Ann Lane of Bella Vista. And I haven't been here in a while because actually I couldn't bear the thought of being in front of you guys since the stump dump. I felt like you guys let us down completely. There was one person in here that I thought was listening to us, and that's Stephen Bork. But I really don't know. I mean, that was a pretty traumatic experience. I don't know if any of you people lived here during the stump dump, but it was pretty bizarre. And it brought up a lot of feelings, like when I came here and was talking to Mark about what happened and how we all were affected and what you people did, absolutely nothing for us. You know, and then I addressed, I said something in the meeting, and Mr. Fowler attacked me. You know, I was already feeling pretty jacked up when I came here, like I am right now, you know. But I'm just a normal guy, you know. I don't, I don't serve the city, but I try to help the city.
Kelly, please, please address the council, not the audience.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Sorry. So anyway, like, you know, I just try to do my part as a, as a good citizen of Bella Vista, you know, and you serve the city of Bella Vista, do you not? I mean, you serve the citizens here, don't you?
I have my comment whenever everything's done.
Oh, okay. That's okay. I really don't want to hear your comment because I'm trying to refrain myself from getting escorted out of here, because I really want to tell you how I feel about you specifically after watching those videos. Like I said, I couldn't come here. I chose not to come here because I couldn't stand the way it makes me feel when I'm up here. So that's why I haven't been here for a long time. But I thought it was important that I come up here as a citizen of Bella Vista and let you know that I don't think you're appropriate for this position. You came here, you said something about recommendations on the video I watched. I have a recommendation. I agree with him 100%. I second the motion that you should be removed. You should step down. Have a little class. Step down from whatever it is you think you're doing, because this isn't Russia or you're not a dictator. You're not a king. These are people that you work with up here. You mean, we have business meetings too, but we invite a higher power to our meetings that is a group conscious. We take a group conscious. Not one person's attacking someone or the whole group, you know. You're, you're not the king here, bro. You're just a human being, man. Treat people with respect. You don't deserve to be sitting in that seat. I think I'm gonna end it with that so I don't get escorted out, even though I'm gonna leave after this because I can't stand the way I feel. I can't stand looking at you. You don't deserve the seat that you're sitting in. I don't know if you get paid here, but you shouldn't. And if you got paid, you should refund the money.
Thank you, Kelly. Michelle?
Michelle Chiaco, 51, Perfleet Drive. From the top down, meaning from DC down to the little town of Bella Vista City, we the people feel like the government is totally out to get them, to have our businesses shut down and told, "We own nothing and will be happy." We are in a place in this time of history where we feel as though there is no one in government who supports the life that we've been taught to want and strive to achieve. We have been encouraged to be entrepreneurs, think outside the box. That's the American way, isn't it? And when we do, we are slammed with government regulation. We invest our time, our money, our souls into what we have been taught to go after, and when we are told no, if we try and fight back, it feels like we're animals shoved into a cage with nothing to do but claw back. I left the last meeting finally feeling like the council was willing to allow us, who have felt like we have been backed into that cage, to be a part of creating something good. After that meeting, Mr. Fowler, you said you were done with the STR ordinance, and I took you at your word. And then I watched the work session. I watched your disrespectful attitude, Mr. Fowler, in that recorded meeting. Since when is it okay to challenge anyone, including an elected official, on who or what they donate to? Apparently, Mr. Fowler, you do not believe in raising money for a campaign, for a legitimate campaign, as your own campaign records show. Perhaps you decided to self-fund, which is totally great. Or maybe no one wanted to give you the financial support because they didn't agree with what you stand for. Only you know that answer. Campaigns take money to run, as you should know, Mr. Fowler, and some people, like myself and others, want to donate to the person they feel would be the most capable of the job, the entire job, not just this small ordinance. So I would challenge you to keep your thoughts to yourself and treat other council members and the general public with respect for their First Amendment rights, one of the rights you swore to protect in your oath of office. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Bryce?
Bryce Cole, 38, Swanage. I'll try to be brief, gentlemen. Very much like Michelle just said, I left our last session where we were discussing STR feeling very hopeful that common sense was gonna prevail. We're gonna get together, people from all walks of the community, form a committee, and, and really be able to come up with some common sense regulation that everybody can get behind. I watched the last work session, and I was just utterly disgusted. I feel like that, I hope that we can move forward with the intent that was originally discussed in the previous meeting and not try to ram something through that is contrary to that intent. I know that there's many folks, myself included, working on the backend to create this committee and reaching out to people that you recommended that have not been amendable to actually setting up dates. So all I'm gonna say is that I think that we had a great meeting last time where we have a great idea to come up with a committee and, and form these common sense regulations so we can put this behind us and be a, a community with regard to this again. Let's stay with the intent of that. That's what I'm begging this council right now, is to stay with the intent of that, and we'll get it done without trying to be very disrespectful to each other and ram some folks through and just try to get it done for the sake of getting it done. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Bryce. Dylan?
Dylan Chatix. I just wanted to come up here and give some appreciation words to the four people that won't be in their positions no longer come January 1st. So Steve Burke, John Flynn, I know you still have a race, but Mayor Christie and Wayne Jurtson, y'all have done a great job for the city of Bella Vista in the past couple of years. Mayor Christie, eight-plus years. Wayne, eight-plus years. Steve, four-plus. John, eight-plus. So I really appreciate the work that you've done for the city of Bella Vista. So that means a lot to me, being a former resident and now working for the city. So that's very appreciated. And I wanna commend John. Ran against him for city council in 2018. He ran a great race. That was really fun. So I appreciate your kind words throughout these years and advice, and appreciate y'all. So I have some things for ya, I wanna give ya before you exit this year, because I won't be in town for next month's meeting. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Dylan.
Thank you, Dylan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan.
Stacy Lamb?
Stacy Lamb, 80, 65, North Lake Shore, Rogers, Arkansas. I just wanna say, you know, that we, as an STR owner, we all appreciate all the work that you guys are doing. We know that this has been difficult. It's been difficult for everybody. Homeowners are upset. You guys are getting all the flack. STR owners are upset, and we all do recognize the position that you're all in. But as someone looking out, watching a video last week, I was horrified to see how the city council was represented by Fowler. It's embarrassing to watch grown men talk like that to other grown men. And I do not believe that you represent who, what Bella Vista is. We, as an STR owner, we have our homes here to share this community with other people, and we chose this community because it's a beautiful place. It's a great community, and it has wonderful people in it. And that's what we wanna share with people. And Fowler is not representing that, and it's just extremely embarrassing. Also, I wanna say just quickly that the STR owners are working very diligently. There's a large group of us, whether we're here in this audience or not. There's a very large group of us working behind the scenes at many different levels, not just Bella Vista, but with homeowners, STR owners, supporting businesses. And we are ready and willing, anytime you guys are ready to sit down and have a discussion, instead of name-calling and arguing about real issues and real facts. And we're ready to put in the work like we have in the last few months. We've all spent many hundreds of hours working on this thing collectively, and we're still willing to do that with your help, with your assistance, and, you know, as partners, because I feel like that we're all here for, for the same thing, which is to have a great city, the great city of Bella Vista. So anyway, I just wanna say thank you for continuing to, to work on this, and let's just keep that in mind, that the end goal is what's best for everybody and not just one side versus the other. Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. Abby Foster?
Hey there. Abby Foster, number 17, Isla Lane. I actually appreciate all you guys, even the ones that I disagree with completely. I appreciate your service. I've never in my life awakened and said, "I think what I wanna do today is go to a city council meeting." And as soon as we get this STR thing done, I honest to goodness hope to never be at another one. Okay? But it has pointed out that we do need to be watching. So hello there. At your October working session, you collaborated to create a consensus ordinance that puts us on a path to address a good number of the short-term rental regulations that your residents, your voting residents, have been asking for. First of all, thank you. Thank you for the collaboration, because that's what leaders do, and we really do appreciate it. What we're asking for you, from you tonight, is this. We ask that you act tonight to resurrect your consensus ordinance. And it's as simple as that. And look, I know, it's frustrating. I mean, it has to be. And I would hate to be held in the, the public eye constantly. I, I do have government clients, and boy, they're just under a microscope all the time. Sometimes you're gonna make good decisions, some bad. Sometimes you get frustrated with one another, and sometimes you're gonna just, you know, love each other to death. All of that happens. I do know how nasty it gets. I myself have been called names for coming up here and saying that I want regulations, you know, to kind of help the security and safety of, of our community. So again, I appreciate it, and I'm, I'm sorry, you know, for some of the stuff you guys have to put up with, but, but we really do appreciate you. And I don't run against any of you.
Thanks, Abby. James?
So James Foster, 17, Isla Lane. I started to come up here first and say I was gonna keep it short, because I figured everything you'd hear here tonight from most people was stuff you've heard before. I would say that's probably not the case now. But what I wanna do is I'm gonna keep mine simple. You, you have heard a lot. What I wanna say is this, that we citizens are asking for the city council to take the forward step, pass an ordinance that provides enforceable accountability for STR owners and protects the rights and quality of life for citizens. To quote James Keen, he was a former city manager of Palo Alto, California, and his quote is, "The actual work of politicians is to reconcile perspectives and reach real agreement." I'm asking that you move forward with consideration of an STR ordinance and make a difference for Bella Vista.
Thank you. Maria?
Hey there, Maria Pope, 4 Hillcrest Lane, Bentonville. First of all, happy Thanksgiving. We're here on a Monday night, which is before Thanksgiving. I wanted to say thank you, guys. And I think the majority of us, everybody here appreciates your time and your effort you guys all put in so many hours. And whether we like where this is all going or not, it doesn't matter. Doug, you spent a ton of time. Everybody else has too, so thank you. I wanted to give you a quick update and let you know that STR owners and a number of local citizens have decided to work together per your recommendation and what you passed last time. We have four STR owners. There are four local owners who are middle ground, who want, all of us want an ordinance. All of us want legislations, not legislations, all of us want parking, noise, all those issues taken care of. And so we're really excited to get to work together with you, maybe take a little bit of the load off your plate so that we can bring you something in January. So hopefully we'll have it by December. Just wanted to give you that update now. So thank you, guys, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. And to you. Larry? Kelly?
Larry Kelly. I live at 12506 Coller Lane, and I'm kinda surprised to be here. I really thought that we had a plan the last time that we were together at a city council meeting. I thought that we decided that we were gonna talk about a citizens group of both STR owners and, and folks that had some complaints, and we're gonna all work together on coming up with some solutions. And so I really kinda not planned to be here. But then I got sent a link to this work session video, and I was speechless. And I thought, oh my God, why is Doug bringing this up again? Didn't we have a plan? Didn't we have an agreement? And there's no mandate to do that again. We already have. The ordinance has been tabled till after the first of the year. Why are we just beating this thing and beating it and beating it? And so, you know, I'm, I'm happy to be here and be a participant in the process, but I think that we already have a plan for short-term rental ordinances, and Maria and Stacy just talked about it. We've got a plan. We're working on that plan. Can we give that chance, give that plan a chance to work? And I was appalled at Doug's behavior as well. Doug, I really felt bad for you. I felt embarrassed for you. I felt like I wanted to come to Jerry's defense, but actually Jerry's just a representative of other people. I, I think you were way out of line in calling him out on his mayoral candidate donations. Has nothing to do with this topic at all, at all. And I'm just happy that he remained civil and nice, but I would expect nothing less of Councilman Snow. But I just want you to know that I didn't appreciate that. I, I would echo some of these other things that folks have said about, my gosh, I would, I'd feel so terrible about it. I'd wanna resign, step down. But I've recognized in the short-term rental ordinance, I mean, you and I had a nice breakfast one time and discussed this, but you just seem so myopic in your focus on that it has to be your way. And that's not the way that leaders operate. It doesn't have to be your way. If you truly represent your constituency, then you listen to all of them. And I don't think you've been doing that. I think we have a plan. Let's stick with the plan. Let's let the citizens group work together to come up with other suggestions on how to regulate short-term rentals in Bella Vista. A community effort, a joint effort, not one perspective. Thanks.
Thanks, Larry. And Teresa Cole?
Hello, Teresa Cole, 34, Swanage. I hadn't planned on speaking tonight, but I just wanna make a couple comments. My husband and I have a short-term rental, and I just feel like short-term rental owners are villainized. And we're here because we love the city of Bella Vista. We love how beautiful it is. We will retire here when we get that opportunity. And I feel like some people think that we're big corporations coming in, buying these houses, and not caring about the neighbors. And I also keep trying to hear the other side of the story, because we do care about the neighbors. We care about the city. We care about the neighbors. And I'm, I'm searching for the big complaints, and what it seems like to me is that people are just not wanting outsiders in their community. And I just don't agree with that. I've heard things about people turning down cookies, and it just doesn't seem to me like it's as big of a problem. And like everyone has said, you know, we wanna work with the homeowners, and I think we had a plan to do that. And I really wanna say something to Mr. Fowler, but I'm gonna bite my tongue, because I don't wanna be a bully. But that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. That ends the speakers. Council, you now have an opportunity to respond. Who would like to go first?
I guess I could.
Okay.
I guess I missed all the fun last week. Just, just one thing, you know, your committee is doing its thing, and I applaud that. But something the committee and we need to think about. You know we all went bananas when they came out with this white fence thing and didn't make it retroactive and making everybody pony up all the way? My feeling on the short terms is that they need to be those who can prove they've been in business for X number of months. They need to be grandfathered in, as they are, instead of trying to make them comply with something that in most cases is almost impossible to do. And then make your rules for the new ones based on X number of people per room, period. And the only inspection you would have would be like the fire department coming in checking for a smoke detector. Just something to chew on in that committee, because that would be fair. You know, you don't wanna put the white fence thing on, but there's something to think about in your committee. And I'm gonna stick my neck out, at first of the year, if you want, I will be this body's member of that committee and try to go forward with it. Now, the only thing I would ask is, when we meet, or if we meet, if you even like that idea, we keep the number down to eight, nine, 10. Couple of city council members if they want, couple of short-term STRs, couple of long-term STRs, maybe one or two residents, and then one person from the city, and it was suggested we take the guy from planning. So keep it a manageable committee, because you get more than eight, nine, or 10, and you're not gonna get anything happening. So keep it small, and then we'll have a few new heads up here and see what develops. But if we last first of the year, I'll give it a shot.
Okay, thank you, Oz. Anybody else?
All right. Okay, where do I start here? I mean, you know, certainly it's disappointing to hear people make personal comments about you, right? Little hard to take. I've been on council for six years now. I'm somewhat used to it. I think all council members, you know, I don't know, just, just develop a sense of, you know, you're gonna take some shots, and that's just the way it's gonna be if you do your job, really. So just, you know, I'm gonna kinda take these like one by one. I hope I can make this quick. You mentioned campaign contributions. I ran two times for city council, right? I funded my campaign both times fully out of my own pocket. There's a reason for that, because I wanted to be able to stand on my own two feet. I wanted to be able to do the research. I wanted to be able to talk to the people, and I wanted to be able to make decisions free of any special interests or any overriding pressure from anybody, from anyone that might have made contributions to my campaign. I put up all my signs. I ran all my ads myself. I put them together myself. I set up my social media pages. I did everything myself so I could stand independently and I could answer for the residents of Bella Vista without any pressure. That's why I did it, okay? And then because anybody wouldn't give. I didn't ask anybody to, and if they would've offered, I would not, I would not, I would have not accepted it. I did not recommend anyone to be on this resident short-term rental committee at all. I was opposed to it. I didn't think it should happen, and I'll probably touch on this in just a minute, but this committee, the way it exists right now, it's not gonna happen. I know that for a fact. And one of the reasons it isn't gonna happen is because of exactly what you saw tonight. And, and as much as you may not think about this, there are people watching you as well, right, in the community? So I don't know, maybe people have an opinion about me. Maybe it's negative, maybe it's not. I will tell you, I do know I have a lot of support, which also brings me to second point. I received the most votes in a city council election of anybody to date. Over 9,000 is what, is what I received. No one else has received that many votes. So I have a lot of support in the community, and I have a lot of people talking to me that you don't see here. But again, they don't wanna subject themselves to this display as well. You're, you're, you're free for your, to, to, to give your opinion. That's okay. I don't even really take it that personal, quite honestly. It is, it is what it is. When I met with Larry, the conversation was not short-term rentals. The conversation was a septic ordinance. I don't even think we talked about a short-term rental ordinance at all. Whatever happened to the septic ordinance that he was proposing, he was talking to me about the last conversation or communication I saw on that, I believe, was in June or July. I don't know what happened to it. It just kinda disappeared. Because it was my understanding there was another council member that was having conversations and trying to put that together, but that was not about short-term rentals. I wanna, I wanna clear that up. Monday, the reason short-term rental, if you will, came up is because it was a discussion topic on the agenda. I did not put it on there. I guess Jerry did. I did not. Came up. It was discussed. And so it was open dialogue, and that's how it got there. I'm not the one that brought it up. In no way am I, or did I put this ordinance together in a vacuum? It's just me? It's just me talking? And I'm rigid and I won't move? It was put together with an effort from a really nice body of people, including our planning department, of course, ADH, myself. I've listened to residents. I've listened to short-term rental owners. The original ordinance that was proposed, and I'll say this till I'm blue in the face, has basically been edited and changed holistically three different times. So to sit here and have people say that I'm rigid and I don't listen and I'm not, I'm not open to feedback and dialogue is abjectly false, period. And I have to say it time after time. This also was absolutely no effort to short down, to shut down towards... was absolutely no effort to shut down short-term rentals at all, okay? It was to put some regulation around them. And I've said it 100 times. It's the reason that this came forward is because of the conversation that was taking place in the community from residents, okay? I represent the residents. They voted me into office to do that. And that is why I'm here. And that's what I'm going to do. And short-term rental owners, I don't have anything against the short-term rental group. I, you know, you keep saying it, but I don't. There's not any effort to eliminate that business model in Bella Vista. I've stated that over and over and over. It's just to put some reasonable regulation around these properties, okay? And that's it. So.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to the minutes. We had two meetings. We had one on October the 24th, which was the regular meeting. Are there any errors or omissions? Hearing on and entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Flynn?
Second.
Mr. Wilmes?
All right, roll call vote. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie.
We had a special meeting on October the 27th to approve a building contract for sand and salt addition to the back of Old Fire Station Number Three so that we can, in times of inclement weather, actually forward deploy the plows and the sand and salt into the Highlands so they're not running back to our main base every time. It's something we did very similar a few years ago off Trafalgar Road. And you approved it, and we're now moving forward. Are there any errors or omissions?
Did we talk about, are we into the ordinances and things now?
No, we're doing the special meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It sounded like we were talking about that.
No. Are there any errors or omissions in those minutes? Seeing on and entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Flynn?
Second.
Mr. Wilmes?
All right, roll call vote again. Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Carrie, 6-0.
Normally, we would have a financial report, but because we have moved the council meeting forward because of Thanksgiving, we do not have the tax data yet. The tax money actually comes in around the 23rd, 24th of the month. And so we cannot complete the financial statements. And once they're in, which will be next week, then we will publish them. And if you'd like a copy, you can pick up a copy at City Hall or just give me a call, and I'll be more than happy to email them to you. Okay, entertain a motion to suspend the rules of order and procedure to allow all ordinances on the agenda to be read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All right, roll call again. Councilmember Wilmes?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Carrie, 6-0.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to be recognized to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just a couple of comments before I do. The conversation around this committee, and I do have direct knowledge of this, this committee isn't happening. The person who was kind of, I'm going to say, selected, and I don't think that this person was expecting that at the time, kind of like a deer in the headlights, didn't really know how to respond, reluctantly took it on, has decided, you know, that she's going to resign from that committee. I don't believe there are any other committee, other committee members that are really identified right now or have agreed to this. I don't really see it going anywhere. If in the future, maybe in January, if something happens then, that's all well and good. But in the meantime, I think we need to move forward. We need to get this item back on the agenda. So I'd like to move to take from the table the proposed ordinance entitled an ordinance regulating short-term rentals to provide for the requirement of a permit to operate a short-term rental, to provide a process for revocation of a short-term rental permit, to provide safety and onsite septic inspection requirements for short-term rentals, to provide occupancy limits for short-term rentals, providing penalties for violations and for other purposes, which was offered for consideration by me, subsequently amended by the council, and which was tabled at the October regular council meeting until the February, January 2023 regular council meeting, and further to suspend Rule 7B of the rules of order and procedure of the city council regarding the agenda to permit consideration of this proposed ordinance during the unfinished business portion of tonight's meeting agenda.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll do a second.
Mr. Wilmes?
So that we can discuss it.
Okay. This is a non-debatable, I believe?
The rules of order dictate that a motion to take from the table is a non-debatable motion. The theory behind that is that you don't have a debate to determine whether you're going to debate. So really, at this time, Mayor, what would be an order is a roll call vote on the motion. There is no debate. It's an order.
To put the ordinance back on the agenda for tonight's meeting for the first reading.
A roll call on your motion.
Okay.
Okay, we'll do the roll call on that. Councilmember Wilmes?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
No.
Burke?
No.
Snow?
No.
Mayor, you may vote in favor if you choose. 3-3.
Yeah, I think we need to discuss it again. Let's put it back on the agenda. It can always be tabled again if need be. No, we need to discuss it.
So Mayor, that was the, in the unfinished business, at the end of the unfinished portion of the agenda, we'll come back.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, so we'll move into unfinished business. And the first is an ordinance amending Chapter 109 zoning of the code of, excuse me, the Code of Ordinances of the city of Bella Vista to define short-term rentals to provide for inclusion of short-term rental uses within the table of uses to determine a short-term rental usage as a right or with a conditional use permit within particular zones and for other purposes. This is the second reading. Thank you. Just to reset everybody's memory, this has nothing to do with regulations. This is taking an STR usage to operate a short-term rental, to provide process for revocation of a short-term rental permit, to provide safety and onsite septic inspection requirements for short-term rentals, to provide occupancy limits for short-term rentals, providing penalties for violations and for other purposes. And this is the first reading. Is this, is this the one with the consented?
Yes. So when this was last before you, there were sort of amendments adopted by the council. And what has been printed out and handed to you and placed on that table for those who are interested is an incorporated version of all the amendments that had been adopted to be what I'm going to call the Fowler version, which was his original version. So those are all incorporated. And this should read as complete at this point, based on the discussions at this point. The reason it's on first reading and not anything else is that's where it was in its table. So it still remains on first reading.
So what we've done is we brought back the consensus agreement. Does everybody remember that? You know, we sat at a work session and went line by line and put this and crafted it together. And then it was approved at the last meeting. And then it was decided to table it. Since there has been a lot of discussion about going back and looking at it again from a panel or a committee perspective, I think it'll help if we have this on the table so everybody can see exactly what we're talking about as a starting base so it doesn't get lost. And that's why I agreed that we would put it on here. Okay, so we'll open it up. Discussion, anyone?
Right here, Mayor.
Mr. Snow, just hang on. Mr. Flynn got his hand up first.
Well, I just wanted to say I'm not interested in blindsiding anybody. You know, this is first reading. I think there's still plenty of opportunity to figure things out and to, you know, have something that's good for everybody, certainly good for the city. But, you know, before when we tabled it, I think Fowler and I were the only ones who voted against it. And the reason I did that was because I'd heard from everybody. And I can't remember ever having an issue where it was so clear in my mind what everybody thought. Because I not only heard from everybody, I'd heard from everybody about three times. And I thought that we had enough knowledge to figure out a compromise that would work for everybody. We had the knowledge right then. So that's why I never thought, what are we delaying? Having the committee, all this stuff? I don't mind the committee and having input, but I've heard there's problems with the, not the owners of the STRs, but the other side of the committee, perhaps getting people to be involved. Anyway, like I said, I don't want to blindside anybody. I think this process has gone on, and it's an important process. And, you know, I agree to this because it's first reading, and we still have time to figure things out and do something that makes sense.
Okay, Mr. Snow.
Well, I got to congratulate Mr. Fowler on his brilliant procedural move there and getting this back on the agenda since it was tabled until January. I thought we agreed that we, a committee made up of the STR owners and a committee, and non-owners would get together and try to come up with a, what they considered to be bullet points of consideration. And between the two, between the two sides, what was good for both. The, Mr. Fowler made the comment that this committee is not going to happen. I don't know where he gets his information from, but that's totally false. The committee is happening. The committee is going to happen. A person dropped out of the committee, I think in response to Mr. Fowler's performance this past Monday night. She decided after that she didn't want anything to do with it. So I think it's highly irregular that we're bringing this up again when it was tabled until January. And the committee has not had the opportunity to meet and to put their thoughts together to present to the council in January. So I think it needs to be left where it was until January, and then we can discuss it again as it was tabled to be.
So did you have any intent of meeting before January? Because I'm hearing that the STR owners are already putting their heads together.
They're ready. It's the other side of the committee that hasn't come together. And as I said, the person that was putting it together, she decided to quit, as I said, in response to Mr. Fowler's past performance this past Monday night. He kind of insinuated that she was not telling the truth about a particular situation, which she and I both sat here and talked to Daniel Ellis. And Daniel Ellis told us what his feelings were, that he had no interest in the STRs, wasn't concerned about it. But he was concerned about the septic tank issue, and that in his opinion, it should not be included in this ordinance. It should be a citywide issue, as I have contended all along. Mr. Fowler said that basically that wasn't true, that he wanted to hear that from Daniel Ellis himself. So the lady decided to bail out. So now we got to find somebody else to take her place.
I don't think your committee situation frankly has changed at all. I think if anything, you've now got something that you can refer to. This is going to go into January because it needs three readings. And there's nothing wrong with you starting to meet now because we've already heard that there's headway being made, you know, amongst the STR owners. Why would you stop?
Why was it stopped?
No, why would you stop your work?
Oh, there is no reason to stop the work.
Okay, good.
There is no reason to stop. I mean, it should go forward.
Okay.
They should be allowed to make their recommendations. Whether we accept the recommendations or not, they should be allowed to make them.
Sure, because we've still got two more readings. We've still got two more months. There's nothing stopping it at all. Yeah?
Well, it was tabled. As I said, it was tabled.
Okay, it's come off the table and it's back here.
It's come off the table through a procedural move that, again, I got to say, got to be to compliment Mr. Fowler for bringing that, bringing it up in that manner. We'll all have to remember that in the future.
It's not going to stop your good work in being able to pull people together.
I don't know. I really don't know how that will affect it. Because the committee thought that they would have some input on this final ordinance.
They still do. Just because you read it for the first time doesn't mean this is what it's going to look like at the end of three months. It can get amended all the way along. It's a starting point. Simple as that.
Yeah, I still object to it, but that's, again, that's my opinion.
There's still a good starting point here, though. Anybody else?
It wasn't going to happen.
Okay. First of all, this was a citizens' committee, not controlled by the city council at all. Citizens can meet anytime they want, anywhere they wish, anytime. We don't control that. Jerry doesn't. I doesn't. I know I doesn't. That was really great. I don't. And that's just the way it is. So everybody can continue to meet if that's what you agreed to do and had your conversations. But, and I'm not going to sit here and I'm not going to refute the comments from Councilmember Snow. I'm going to get accused of being mean. I know that they're not exactly correct. I know that first, I know that for a fact and I know that firsthand, okay? And just, there's one aspect that I referred to already tonight, why people don't maybe want to be involved, right? Another is the residents, I don't know, I'm not going to speak for STR owners, they don't really have the correct resources. They really don't have the knowledge. They don't have any kind of like legal feedback in any decisions they might be making. I mean, it's just, it's just an open-ended discussion. And at the end of the day, recommendations might be spot-on, but they might just be way off-base, and they may not even be able to be applied just because they can't. So right now, we can go ahead and go through the three readings, right? You can come to January. If this committee has some rationale or has some valid points that they want to impart on a city council member to make amendments, they can do that. And on the other hand, I mean, it's going to go into January. We don't even know what this city government's going to look like, right? We don't. We don't know who's going to be setting up here. We know three people anyway, but the other four, we're really not sure. And that'd be a great litmus test, you know, for that new city council. And I'll tell you, anyone that's running for office right now, to say you really don't know a lot about it, or you don't know enough about it to make decisions, well, you should have been paying attention because you are running for office. I would hope that you would be all over it, whoever you are, regardless, right? So it'd be a nice litmus test to see where the city council is going to stand in regard to representing the people that voted them into these seats up here, okay? So I guess we'll just see what happens going forward. I said, this is only the first reading. I'm not going to take another step. I'm not going to, you know, make a motion to suspend the rules and go to third and final. We'll see how it plays out, you know, at least over the next month and maybe into January. I don't know.
Okay. Mr. Snow?
You know, what is the rush? I mean, what is the rush? What is the, what is the need to rush into this particular ordinance right now? I know, we're going into what is possibly a recession. I don't know whether we are or aren't. But this is the off-season. I would think, I don't know what the STR occupancy rates are right now, but I would think that they're probably less than what they are in the summertime. But, and the outdoor parties or the outdoor, the problems, the noise problems that have been dealt with in the past have been concerning the past. I don't know if this is the type of weather that those parties or those types of situations are going to continue or not. But what is the rush? Why are we got to get it back on? When it was tabled until January, why do we have to get it back on the agenda tonight?
It still goes to January.
Sure. But I mean, why? Again, it was tabled in January, but yet we're taking it off the table and bringing it back tonight. Why? What is the purpose? What is the reason? What is the rush?
Keep the focus on it.
Keep the focus?
We want to do a first reading in January.
We want to do a first reading in January, he's trying to say, want to start fresh.
Here's the deal, okay? Let me recognize. The residents expect us to do our job, this legislative body that's setting up here. And to say rush, this conversation, the first community meeting we had was either like in March or April. And then the conversations actually began way before that. This has not been rushed at all. And it's gone through several iterations already. This is not a rush. What this is really boiling down to is people getting what they want and only what they want, right? That's really what this is. So this body, right now, go through the three readings, you vote it up, you vote it down, it's done. And that's it, you know? That's really what it is. So there is no rush, three readings, we're not voting on it tonight, so let's let it roll, we'll go to second reading next month, and we'll see what happens then.
Mr. Wozniak.
Strictly my opinion, but a whole bunch of people out there indicated that they thought Doug, in his infinite wisdom, was pushing this thing really hard. And now all of a sudden, he's blindsiding us and jumping in, bringing it back before this committee, which he thinks won't fly, but if you run it right, it will fly. You know, let this committee have their say before we get cute with this. Because I'm sure when I mentioned the grandfather thing today, that was a new deal. And the same thing with the inspections and a few other things. So literally, if you ever watched Survivor, you got blindsided with this coming back all of a sudden. If none of us knew about it till tonight.
You know what the most fascinating thing about this is to me? The residents, over and over and over, the only people you can say got blindsided, I don't know, it might be the short-term rental owners, I have people saying, do your job, city council. This has been ongoing way too long. It's time to address it, and it's time to act one way or the other. This, okay, you say blindsided. I don't even know how many people have approached me, emailed me, talked to me, and said, Doug, get this back on the agenda and address it. This city council needs to do the job they're charged with doing. And I don't know why people like think they're blindsided with it. There's no blindside. This conversation's been going on forever. So, it's first reading. So we'll see what happens in December.
Jim, are you willing to get involved before January?
Well, I got a bunch of stuff going on, but yeah.
Okay.
But I don't run committees like a lot of people. We go quick, there's no BS, and we stick to the point. So when we get done tonight, those of you who are on it, we'll pick a couple from both sides, and maybe get one of these guys involved, and then we'll start. But probably not till next week.
Okay, fair enough. And he really does run a meeting that way, too. As only a former police chief can.
Well, and I got two more years, so me and Doug can go back and forth a lot.
We agree more than we disagree, Jim.
That's true, but not on this one.
Mr. Wills?
I guess I seconded the motion to bring it back off the table for a couple of reasons. At one of the last meetings after the meeting, informally spoke with some of the residents, either pro or con, to the consensus ordinance. And I received a pretty curt email from, I believe it was someone from the STR group, if I look back at it, that said, we're keeping an eye on you, and if you don't follow along, that you need to watch out for your election. And I thought that that was rather intimidating, and I didn't think that that was appropriate. I think I've been responsible in trying to represent some of the interests expressed by the STR folks, in my views, in asking for amendments to pass drafts by both Councilman Bork and Councilman Fowler, in keeping with, keeping it not simple, but keeping it fair and equitable. And so as a result of that, I seconded the motion to bring it back off the table. I think it deserves some action. After the discussion at the concluding part of our work session last Monday, it appeared to me that we had maybe an ad hoc committee, and I use that term very loosely, but an ad hoc committee is usually made up of public members, not elected officials typically in my experience, and that maybe that thing was loaded on one side and not being fair and equitable across the boards to get a fair cross-section of views coming back. And with that understanding and doing a little bit of calling around, tended to get some confirmation that maybe that committee is really lopsided, even though there may be members from the STR group in there and from the citizens' side of it. I have dozens of emails from folks who have suffered issues with poorly managed STRs, creating neighborly issues. And granted, you can have an owner buy a house next to you and could be your nightmare for life until you leave, so that's possible, too. The reality is, is that we need to include the STR use in our zoning code. It is not there presently, so we're in violation of our own rules and regulations in the city. So we need to bring that into play and under the umbrella of the city zoning. So we have a couple of things to do here. So I'm in support of reconsidering this, and may offer amendments to it. In the past, I've had issues with some of the procedures here, likening it to the bed and breakfast program that's in our code, which spells out certain inspection requirements. I think that this one, being a short-term rental, might mirror that, but it also includes the things that are in here. So it has some code-required prescriptive inspection standards. There are other ones that are inherent by our codes, whether it's state code for building, state code for fire, heating, ventilating, other access or exit safety things. There are other codes that automatically come into being and come into play for those inspections. So I don't know that we need to leave it open where it would be up to the mayor to make the decision about what's inspected, so.
Okay, so Jim, if you're ready to start next week?
No, well, yeah. Well, like I said, some will come up here, they'll volunteer, I'll ask for a couple others. We'll probably meet the first time sometime next week. If a city council member wants to be part of that, that's fine. And if it is, we'll have to notify the press, although they don't have to come. And the group will be small enough, at least when we start, we could probably meet at City Hall once or twice, and then have a couple open with everybody and their brother.
Good idea.
If they can hear what we're going to do, they may not go back and forth.
Because the City Hall conference table is for 12. The City Hall conference table will seat 12 comfortably, so you should be able to do it.
So we'll be all right.
So let me understand then that the committee that was previously, as Councilman Wills just referred to it being lopsided, if the lopsided committee is now, are they out? They defunct now?
No.
Now we've got a new committee?
No, Jerry. Jerry, I don't know if it's lopsided or defunct, but it's still very much alive. Heavens, why would we stop stuff that's already in progress? That doesn't make any sense.
We're just making the committee smaller so we can work with it.
So let's gather together some people from both sides. I think the STR side is already there. And let's gather some residents together, and let's sit down and work it out at City Hall. And you've got a planning document here that you can tweak any way you want. It just takes an amendment in front of council and away we go. It's not rocket science, and it can be done, we've done it before, okay? So if you're interested in serving the committee, especially on the resident's side, please come up and see Mr. Wozniak or Mr. Snow. Jerry, do you have all the members from Bryce?
Do I have all the members' names or who they are?
Yeah, the STR group that was mentioned.
Do I know who they are?
Yes.
Yes.
Good, okay. So we've almost got a committee together, so let's pull it together and let's start getting to work.
And I would like it to be two long-term, two short-term, two city councils, if I can get them, two non-residents, and then somebody from planning and development. That's more than enough.
They're no long-term, they're just short-term.
All right, my bad. Two live here, two live-ins.
Two residents.
And two.
Two STR folks.
Outsiders, okay? My bad. Two people who live in, and then two people who just have a rental. Numbers are going to be the same.
Okay.
You want two residents, Jim?
Huh?
You want two residents?
Yes, on top of that.
Like neighbors? And then two STR folks.
Well, we did have four STR people.
Two of them live in, like Michelle. Two others own a place, don't live there. That's four. Two city councils, if I can get them.
Okay.
And then two non-owners, and then Daniel or someone from planning. That'd be like eight or nine.
Yep, that's doable. Okay, so let's get the ball rolling and let's get this thing done, start working together. Okay, let's move on here. We have another ordinance, which is waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing the purchase of street salt and sand based on price and availability by informal price quotes through December 31st, 2023. We do this every year, it gives Mike the availability of watching the spot market because we're not big enough to be able to sign large contracts with the suppliers of salt and sand, so we often have to do it on spot market. And this will give him the flexibility of being able to do it up till the end of next year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
That's right, has to go to the third and final.
I make a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
Second.
Mr. Wills, second. Okay, so you're going to vote on suspending the rules.
Councilmember Snow.
No.
Councilmember Flynn.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Burke.
Yes.
Carried, six-zero.
Thank you. This is the third and final, waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing the purchase of street, salt, and sand based on price and availability by informal price quotes through December 31st, 2023. Is there any further discussion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Fowler and Mr. Flynn.
Okay, roll call vote again. Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Carried, six-zero.
Okay, the next piece of business is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a limited, terminable license agreement with the Bella Vista Village Property Owners' Association, Inc., for the purpose of providing additional access to the street department sand and salt facility on Glasgow Road. So this goes back to the farmer fire station number three, where we're going to build a sand and salt on the back. There is a back entrance to it off Alaway Lane, but to get from Alaway to the back entrance so that they can load the trucks, we have to cross the POA land. So this is a 25-year agreement with a renewal for a certain specific amount of time so that we can cross the land to get in and fill the sand and salt trucks. Is there any discussion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Flynn and Mr. Wills. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Fowler, Mr. Wills.
All right, roll call vote. Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Carried, six-zero.
The next resolution is making various adjustments to the 2022 city budget. At your work session, because I too watched it after I got back, Director Hall took you through this. We don't work on GASB, which is government, excuse me, which is, let me put it another way, the fiscal rules that a city works on are quite different than a business one. And so in the effort of complete transparency, we have certain assigned accounts where we hold money for certain projects. So for example, you might be giving the fire department $500 so that they can go out and buy something. We hold that money just for that project, so that it's not touched anywhere else, and that's called assigned revenue. And so what we're doing here is the total transparency of showing, here's the beginning balance, here's what's been spent in 2022, and here's the projected ending balance by the end of the year. And we do this every year so that both the community and all the department heads can see exactly where they are with their assigned funds. Any discussion at all?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wills.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Carried, six-zero.
The final resolution is adopting and approving the development of the United States Bike Route 251, USBR 251, within the city of Bella Vista. This is actually something fun. There are national bicycle highways that are in planning going north, south, east, west. And there's one called 251, it's already got a highway name, that will run from Springfield all the way down to Bella Vista. And it'll come in the back way, and that's one of the reasons why we're paving out towards Commonwealth and through to Trafalgar, is to get ready for this bicycle highway. If it ever comes to fruition, I guess we'll see, but it's nice to see that people are thinking ahead. And so ARDOT is asking all the cities in both, well, in Arkansas, and then MoDOT, which is the other side in Missouri, is asking for the same letters of support to go back. So what you're approving is a letter of support towards this idea. Doesn't mean that you're approving expenditures or anything else, it's just the concept sounds like a great idea. Is there any discussion at all? Mr. Snow?
Mayor, you made the comment that we're paving in preparation for this. Where exactly are we paving in preparation for it?
Yeah, we're putting in a wide razorback greenway. You remember what we did from Blowing Springs all the way out to Metfield? And then we're now taking it up Commonwealth and on to Trafalgar. And it will eventually meet, the trail is called Ragoo, you probably don't know where it is, but it's a little further up on Trafalgar. And this is money that has been given to us by the Walton Family Foundation so that we can put in, it's usually a 12-foot width razorback greenway extension.
It's an off-road.
It's an off-road, it keeps them completely off the road. Any other questions?
One other comment.
Sir?
Is that there is a USBR 51 that goes from basically Bella Vista to Joplin, Missouri, and that's been talked about in the newspaper locally here, if you listen to the news. So this is an alternate route for that north and south 51, so.
Bicycle haven.
Crazy.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Wills and Mr. Fowler.
All right. Roll call vote. Councilmember Wozniak.
Yes.
Burke.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Carried, six-zero.
Okay, announcements. There will be a city council special work session on the 2023 city budget, December 8th at 5:30 here in the court. So if you're interested... So if you're interested in seeing how we're proposing to spend your tax dollars, please do come out and have a look. And you'll be given a full copy of the proposed budget. And we do this every year. Typically, it takes us about two hours to go through it, because council has seen one draft already. And what we're getting ready for is the regular session, which will be held on December 19th at 6:30 here, and the final approval of the budget is going to be on that agenda. And again, that's something that we do in December of every year. But if you're interested, I know not everybody looks like looking at income statements and balance sheets. I'm just one of the weirdos who does. But if you want to see how we're intending to spend your money, both on the capital side, as well as the O and M, the operations and maintenance, please do come. There'll be a city council work session, 5:30 PM on Monday, December 12th, here in the District Court. And again, we're moving the dates forward because of Christmas, okay? The Planning Commission will have a work session Thursday, December 1st, at 4:30 in the afternoon here in the court. And the Planning Commission will have a regular meeting at 4:30 Monday, December 12th, here in the District Court. And the Board of Construction Appeals will meet Tuesday, December 13th, at 3:00 PM, if necessary, again, here in the court. On behalf of council and all city employees, I wish all of you a very happy Thanksgiving. And we are adjourned.